It's just about 7:30. I want to start in the early, yeah, it's just a little after 7:30. At this time, I'd ask that --
Thank you, buddy. You're all right.
Mr. Belkey?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Ms. Hanneken?
Here.
Mr. Molner?
Here.
And Ms. Tully?
Here.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd ask that Dan Davis, the quartermaster from the VFW, he's going to lead us in prayer and thereafter, or I should say probably pledge allegiance and thereafter, Gilby is in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of our authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, we know for the strength of your presence and joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Quartermaster Dan Davis, thank you so much for your prayer and leading us, and hopefully your prayers will work for us every day. Okay, the first item on the agenda would be the minutes of our January 4th, 2016 special meeting and our January 14th, 2016 regular meeting.
Mayor, I make a motion accepting the minutes dated January 4th, 2016 for a special meeting and January 14th, 2016 for a regular meeting.
Second.
Do we have a motion, just second? Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion's carried. Next item on the agenda is public comments. And the first person, we'd ask that they would step forward and come up to the mic over here and state your name and your address. Karen, you're number one.
Karen Burlozi, 1377 Driftwood. Been here since April 2014. I have a question on Shepherd Road. Is there going to be a turning lane?
Good question. You know, the turning lane was not on that proposal. So I have asked that Mike and the engineering department go back and because they haven't started that --
That side, right.
I'm hoping that we can get that put into the plan. I might have to then come back to council. It may cause us to spend more money and it may, there may be enough money within the account existing that we can get that turning lane put in. I don't know why the turning lane wasn't put in there. I'm very disappointed that the turning lane wasn't put in there. And when I caught that the fact that it wasn't in there, I am now asking that we try to put it in there. It just doesn't make sense.
No, sir, it doesn't. The other thing is when they make a break in the concrete on this side to put something in, they patch it up. The patches are not good. I almost have to stop to go in the patches because they're just worn down. Can they make sure those patches don't have a big rut where you might lose a tire? You know, because it's kind of like rough right now.
It's probably cold patch in there on the soon?
Yes, it is.
Is that what it is?
But it's not.
Yeah, that cold patch doesn't hold up very well through the winter months and obviously the flowers pick it up and push it out of the way. We'll have to just get back out there and continue to patch it the best we can during the cold weather. You can't get any hot patches this time of year. So we'll have to, yeah, that little zip.
Okay, then that's all I wanted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. There's no other persons on here that would like to make comments. So that's, we can move on to our regular pending legislation. It's new and pending. So the first item is resolution number 164, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a resolution 164, 2015 for its third reading.
A resolution requesting an independent audit of the City of Macedonia Conformance with established purchasing controls and proper public purpose expenditure requirements.
Will you refer to the reading?
Yes. Okay. I move that we pass and post resolution number 164, 2015 according to law.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is a time for us to discuss it. And this has to do with a request to do an audit, if you will, on expenditures of credit cards which occurred back in 2014 and 2015. I have gone through all of those bills. And by the way, the state auditor, when they did their review, they only made recommendations that we needed to follow some better process, making sure that we have receipts and clean that up. There was no sightings of any wrongdoing at all. I've gone through the 2014, 2015 as every director has done well. We detailed those reports. I find nothing in them that would give rise that there was any abuse in the credit cards expenditures in 2014 and 15, except for those that SWAB had made as it related to fishing. There was a lot of fishing equipment and things that were purchased. I had to talk to Lieutenant Japopovich, who indicated that he had to retrieve all of that stuff from SWAB. We did get it all back and we do have it in our possession. But there was an awful lot of materials that were spent for fishing. There were missing receipts from him as well. Those are the only findings that I could find in the two-year period. And so therefore, I don't believe that an audit is necessary. It's a costly situation. We are going to have an audit starting in 215 very shortly. The auditors will be in here and they certainly can again look at the 2015. And if we ask them, we can go back to 2014. So if they had seen any irregularities in our process of our credit cards in the city, they would have cited us over that. That's as much as I can tell you about the Visa cards. Do you have any questions?
I actually don't have questions. I do have comments. Let me just say this. This has been a repeated item that's been listed since basically 2012, 2013, when I've been watching the audits more closely. I believe that there, there's a couple of things about this that need to tell us to move forward with a formal audit. Number one, we don't have a formal report from the mayor. The mayor has said he's looked at these things. We need documentation. And he has not decided to provide that to us, number one.
Excuse me? That's not the truth.
Well, I'm sorry. That's exactly what you just said in the work session.
No, I said I didn't create a formal report. Let's speak the truth here now, Sylvia. Don't be --
Well, well, that's exactly what I said. We, I don't have a formal document from you and I do not. Do I?
You said I wouldn't provide a formal document.
Well, you indicated that you weren't doing that. Now, if you are, then I accept that. Are you going to produce a formal document?
I'm more than happy to share the documents that I have reviewed with council and anyone who would like to see them.
Okay, well, because you've made a conclusion based on those documents, then that's why I ask you to put together a report. I am certainly happy to look at those and to have other people look at them with me and I'm sure they're all public record. So what I'm saying is I believe that based on the history of this, that we should go forward with a formal audit. And I don't have a problem if we produce that audit now or we produce an audit as the auditors come in for this year. So whatever that is, I'm perfectly willing to do that. But I do believe we should go ahead and have a documented accounting for what has gone on. It is true that they haven't cited us. What they did is they said that we have an issue that they could, that we have not provided appropriate documentation and collected it as we should have for credit card use in the sampling that they took. That's all they said. And --
Can someone else speak?
Well, yes, when I'm finished, please go ahead. So the facts are that we need to know what's gone on and we need to have a formal report on what's gone on, in my opinion. So I certainly would like to go forward with this. But if there is a vote against it, then I'm going to continue to ask that we do this audit when we have the auditors come in this year. So anyway, that's, that's all I have to say.
As the previous finance chairman and as a member of the audit committee, what we have are recommendations. There was a formal audit done. Out of the formal audit comes recommendations or sightings. And we don't want to get on the worst-case scenario. There are more recommendations than just the purchasing controls. So what the city traditionally does, and we have a new finance director, takes the recommendations, works with the various department heads, HR, if HR needs to be included, and the mayor to identify the processes that should be enhanced, changed, or reinforced so that the next audit, the auditors are aware that this is what the change has been made and looks to see have they now been instituted so that the issues are rectified. That happens, as the mayor says, in the next formal audit by the state that begins in February. Of course, we're not going to have perhaps some changes. There's more recommendations. There were nine listed, so why we pick only one to pick on is not logical. The other logic is why would you pay for another auditor when you have a new mayor, a new finance director, a new HR director who can take a look at this, unbiased look, and see what happened and what could change? And then if things can't be changed, and I've got to tell you over the years, a lot of recommendations, you may start up here and in a year and a half time, you're down here. The number of recommendations goes down because the changes are looked at, implemented, and enforced. I don't see us paying for another auditor because we're going to pay for another state audit anyhow. And we need to give the people who are now in the seats time to care for what was found.
From my perspective of reading this as well, I'm going to echo what Jan said a little bit, but there was a procedural error that was identified. In talking to Mayor Miglioreini, he said he has corrected those errors. So to spend more money, more public dollars to investigate something that's been corrected is not logical to me.
Also, I make a comment just to ask Ms. Hall. In overall, in our budget, what does the credit card charges represent percentage-wise? I mean, is that an unfair question for you to just get on there? I want to confirm. I think what I know the answer is, but I just want to, I don't want to make a mistake. So, but I think it's less than 1% of the overall budget was used on these credit cards.
I'm sure. I can find out.
Very small. We're not talking about big numbers here. We're talking about procedure and how the policy works and the enforcement of the policy. And I think that every director is very mindful of the policy and they're only spending on things that are necessary.
And I also, I guess I wanted to point out that, like you said, there's a new mayor, there's a new finance director, and there's a new service director. And those are basically all the people that had the credit cards in 2014. So a new regime has changed. So this might, you know, I guess throwing good money after bad is --
Let me just make this final comment from my standpoint. The importance of credit card controls are that credit cards are the most easily abused purchases of any government, number one. Number two, the, the fact is that we have had a repeated citing and recommendation that we tighten these controls. Number three, we do not know in any formal sense what actually happened and what the purchases documentation have been that have been deficient, even though they've been listed by the auditors as deficient. So my own view of this is we should proceed with a specific audit to be able to know how these processes got ignored in the first place. And it's not that, and there are some people who may be owing money back to the city if they didn't properly use their credit card. So, and I think it's important to establish those kinds of discipline, honestly, because the temptation to use these procedures, I would personally think we ought to stop using credit cards for, for anybody, a very restricted number of people. I know in, for the school system, for example, only the superintendent and the treasurer have access to credit cards or authorize any doc, any kinds of purchases through credit cards. And they're very strict. So I think that's, my own view is we ought to establish what has gone on and if anybody owes anything back. And it's more important to have that discipline put into place than it is to worry about embarrassing anybody.
I too have talked to the finance director before Rida came on. And I did look at the, you know, the charges that were made in 2014. And I think that there was less than 35. I mean, is that about right? So we're talking that we had a finance director here in 2014 that we paid for a year that couldn't find these mistakes out of these --
Well, he was not here, as you know, for a good part of the time, Mr. Belkey. And at any rate, we don't need to go there.
I want to just call this. Call a roll call, please.
Mr. Belkey?
No.
Mr. Engel?
Yes. Mr. Miglioreini, could you provide us the credit cards that were questioned? I think you said you had them, so we could look at them. But I'm voting yes. Thank you.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
No.
And Ms. Tully?
No.
Okay. Motion fails. Next item on the agenda is resolution number 3, 2016.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number 3, 2016 for its second reading by title only, please.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Mark Gedetti as the Director of Law and Thomas Hanslick as the Assistant Director of Law in providing for compensation and support services.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number six.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number six for its second reading by title only.
An ordinance appropriating a fund transfer from the general fund to new line item 101, 150, 5346 to meet unpaid obligations from 2015.
I'm sorry?
Do we need to add this? We need a motion to add the addition?
That's only if you want to do that. It doesn't have to do --
Can't do it until she doesn't want to do it. Even though I thought we were going to let the public know.
Well, I mean, you can certainly add that as a item to add. It adds the, where the dollars were spent. So if you want to add it, fine. If you don't want to add it, you can attach it as an exhibit as well.
I'll make a motion to add the additions that were on the ordinance that we were provided today.
Second.
Here, we have motion in a second. All those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion's carried.
Or nay?
Or nay?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I never know exactly you say aye. Am I supposed to say aye or nay? But I'm, I was, oh, vehemently opposed, I would say.
All right. The record will still be in the --
The vehemently?
The vehemently, yes.
Good.
So this is ordinance number six. It's not going to be this when it's read for the third reading?
Yeah. It won't be offered for a third reading until next time.
It'll conform.
I just, but this is what we're going to --
It'll conform with what Mr. Molner's --
We could amend it next time.
It has been, it just has been done.
Right. We know. We got it.
Yes, okay.
Okay, and we're at --
The next item is then ordinance number seven.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number seven, 2016 for its second reading by title only.
An emergency ordinance establishing compensations scheduled for the non-union city employees of Macedonia effective January 1, 2016.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number eight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number eight, 2016 for second reading by title only, please.
What did I do on here? Oh, there we go. An ordinance repealing ordinance number three, 2012, making members elected to council ineligible, elected to council eligible to participate in city health care plan. So we're repealing the ordinance that allowed that.
Next item is ordinance number nine.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number nine, 2016 for its second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance repealing city elected official eligibility to receive recreation fee discounts to Macedonia Family Recreation Center.
Okay, next item is ordinance number 10.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer, it's actually resolution number 10, 2016, for its second reading by title only.
A resolution requiring the City of Macedonia to participate in ohiocheckbook.com.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 13.
Mr. Mayor, move to offer ordinance number 13, 2016 for first reading only, by title only.
An ordinance appropriating a fund transfer from the capital fund to line item --
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's now 13.
Sorry.
I guess you can have it now.
Okay, let me amend that. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 13 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
This is 13?
This is 13.
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't even discussed it yet.
Yeah, I thought we were going to hold it out for a --
It's paying the GPD bill.
But we haven't even discussed it.
No, I thought this was first reading.
First reading.
Why would we do first reading when we owe a bill of $4,000 for work that was done on the old Our Lady Guadalupe detention? You know, these people can start charging us interest and I'm going to encourage them to do so. We don't pay our bills.
Ms. Tully, there's a couple of things. The mayor indicated they got the bill late. Number two, I indicated in the work session that we'd already appropriated funds for this study in 401. And when we get the closeout for the year, I'm going to check the lines that we appropriated. So I, I think that this should stay at first reading.
I offered it for three. It was a second for three. So it goes that way first. If you vote no, then it goes back.
Yeah, we need a roll call.
You got to follow the rules.
Mr. Belkey?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
We haven't had an opportunity to discuss this at all, so I'm going to vote no.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yeah, so I'm going to vote no because I believe that we don't need to transfer the funds because I believe the money already exists in what's been appropriated. So I'm voting no.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Motion fails, okay. So give it a first reading.
It's a pass. Nope. Mr. Belkey?
Oh, no. Okay, so this was for the suspension of rules. So you cannot suspend the rules if you didn't have enough power. So it goes back to first reading.
Correct.
So I already read it.
Okay, all right.
So we're good to go.
So the next item on the agenda is ordinance number 14.
So I apologize. I think I screwed that up. I will offer, Mr. Mayor, I will offer, move to offer ordinance number 14, 2016 for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance, many codified ordinances in order to mandate an approved security action plan for big box retail businesses that are designated as retail security-issue locations.
And I just want to just mention this just for the record is that this ordinance that we're looking at is directed to large box users in the City of Macedonia that are retailers that have ongoing, perhaps, security problems, theft problems, where our police department has to respond numerous times. I think this was overdue. I think we need to get this law into effect. And we will critique it by the next meeting. There may be some things that we're going to kind of change around a little bit. But I wanted to get a first reading on it. And I also wanted to get it out to the general public so that they're aware that there will be some requirements of these retailers to have a secure, a security guard, an armed security guard on staff and with the powers of arrest so that we can feel safer in many of these retail establishments throughout our, our community.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. I know that we're only at first reading, so, but I think it's important to highlight these, given the definitions in this document. It says, "A big-box retail business means all commercial establishments that are open 24 hours per day or conduct permitted, and/or conduct permitted retail uses within or outside buildings with a gross floor area of 25,000 square feet or more." This is only going to apply to Macedonia Commons facilities?
Well, it can apply to Macedonia Commons. It can apply to any other building within our city that has 25,000 square foot of retail space or more.
Right.
And that includes other areas of the --
But not the JED normally or any of that?
Well, the township, I think, may be considered this legislation as well.
Okay, but that would be up to them, right? Okay. And so my question is really, there, I've got a couple of questions that I think I'd like to, how many, we certainly have had in the case of at least one of the businesses here more than five or more calls for service within a 60-day period. I think people would not be surprised by that based on the number of police cars we see over at a couple of these establishments. Are we thinking that we are targeting only these things of the magnitude of, let's give an example, of the magnitude of Walmart, Burlington Coat Factory, those kinds of stores?
I don't follow your question.
My question is, who are we targeting?
We're targeting anybody that has more than six incidents within a 60-day period.
Right. I'm saying, who are those people right now?
I'm, I'm not here to, to expand upon that at this point in time. I, I think that this purpose is to just get this information out there. We do have problems at certain locations in our city. I need not have to say who they are. But we have problems. And because of those problems, this legislation's coming to the table and hopefully it'll get passed. And hopefully we'll have enforcement in those areas.
You know, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask which retailers we're talking about here. And we are, we do, we have had issues, I believe, that were brought up a couple of years ago with hotels that were causing issues of more than six visits in a month. I'd just like to know who we're talking about. I guess I, that, I think we should be very clear on what we're talking about and what's involved.
Well, the chief and I had a very brief conversation. We're doing a first reading to get the topic on the table. That this is, Exhibit A is a draft. That there are tweaks that need to be made that will be made with the police department and the law department's review and then presented back to us. So this is our opportunity to get the questions on the table, but knowing that this is not a final product and that the driver is the situation of manpower, hour power, money power, and the protection of those who shop at stores as well as our ability to have a safe environment for anyone who comes into the city to shop or residents that shop.
I understand the, the point of it. What I'm trying to figure out is, does it include everything that I would like to see in the type of security requirement? And so that's why I'm asking the question. That's number one. Number, because there are more than one or two places that have issues. That's all I'm asking. It's not like it's a secret or something, is it? And since we are talking about so many activities, I'm sure we already know who these, are we having five or more times a month? Is it every store in our city? Or is it a limited number of stores? And I think, just asking the question, I don't see why that's so odd.
I think the point here is that we recognize that we have a problem. And I've heard from a lot of people about certain places in our town where even my own mother says, "I'm not shopping there anymore." And that, that to me is kind of scary to think that our safe little town of Macedonia, my own mother won't shop there. And I think what the mayor's after, and, and it kind of echoes what I pushed through with the hotel ordinance years ago, is that if there's habitual problems and the business does nothing to correct those problems, then why are we continuing to police them? So, a good example being a hotel that allows the same prostitute, which was the case in one of ours, to keep coming back. So, they knew who the person was, they allowed them to keep coming back to the room. That person could, habitually got arrested for prostitution. So, do we allow that to continue to happen, or do we take the necessary steps to make our town a little bit safer? And I think that's what this is, i- is trying to fix at this point.
Well, you know, I'm not arguing about it being fixed. All I'm asking is some, you know, we didn't want to have a work session, which was nor, where I would normally ask some of these questions. We appear to not want to do that anymore. So, I'm asking the questions I would be asking in work session, and I don't think it's unreasonable. It isn't a secret. Let's see, who are we talking about?
If you know who they are, they're likely.
Well, I, well, listen, Mr. Mayor, you're the one proposing this. I, I, I'm not against it. I would just want you to lay it out for the public, what we're talking about. Well, the first thing it says is you've got to be twenty-five thousand square feet. Think of the stores that we have that are twenty-five thousand square feet. It start, I mean, that's not hard to do. We're not getting anywhere, let's just move on.
May I ask one question though, before we move on? May I ask, please Chief, another question?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking, Chief, go, I'm looking at the one section, I think it's section C, which talks about the security plan, which may require an armed licensed security guard, which I equate to like a, a, a private security company?
I, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but, okay, go ahead.
Well, it says that, it talks about that these people may be required to be armed licensed security guards and/or off-duty law enforcement people present. And so I guess since you're the top cop.
Rumor has it.
I want your opinion on whether or not you want, and you don't have to give it to me today, but at some point I want to hear it. Do you support the idea that we may be requiring private security companies to be in certain stores with guns?
If, if they're certified, certainly.
Okay, that's all I was wanting to know.
The problem that we run into, Dave, is companies nowadays, they instruct their loss prevention not to do anything, and people walk out of the store and they're not allowed to do anything. We're hoping that they're, we're forcing them to provide arrest powers, which will deter these people from coming back. I think that's the gist of the ordinance.
Well, if, if they're not doing anything, and these people are just walking out, I guess, with merchandise, and if that's their policy, then why are we, are, why are we even involved? I mean, they, are they calling you?
They, they call us, yeah.
But they let them walk out?
Yep, because their loss prevention isn't allowed to have any contact whatsoever with, with the violators.
So, then if they walk out, and you guys take two minutes or three minutes to get there, half the time I would think they'd already be gone, if they're smart thieves.
Sometimes they are, yeah. Well, we, we had one today, and, and we were there, we caught him and caught her.
Slower, dumb thieves, right?
Yes, well, I could do.
Job security, I guess.
That's what I, what?
Job security.
Okay. Those were the question, type of question I could ask.
Does Wal, does Walmart fall into the category of multiple calls within sixty days? Is that true or not true?
Yes.
Yes, it is true. What other stores fall into that category?
If I may interrupt, Mark, could you, should we be talking about specifics?
It's first read, and part of Ms. Hannigan's question, it's proactive, so just because someone may or may not qualify for the past sixty days, by the time we pass this, they could qualify in the future. And as far as Mr. Engel's question as to the, you know, the carrying of armed, or armed personnel carrying in the city, the chief has ultimate control over the, over the security program. It goes into the ordinance, so. The, the entity would bring a plan to the chief, the chief would review it, can make amendments, so it's going to be within the chief's control.
Can I ask the chief another question?
Sure.
Chief, I'm, I'm sorry, but this seems to be, you seem to be the man important on this. I'm not trying to pick on you. And since we don't have a, didn't have a work session, this is, I guess, my only opportunity here. Are, is this, are other cities, do other cities have similar ordinances?
Yes.
And, and which ones, can you tell me?
I have to call Chief Needert in Bedford, see what he did there, but other cities do have this, yes.
Okay, is this then, I guess this will go to our lawyer here. Is this, is this based on the Bedford statute?
It's based on several statutes, and that's one of the things that we're reviewing and looking to see what, what other cities and municipalities are doing, so we can get the best of both worlds, get a good fit for Macedonia.
Thank you.
And one last question, you may have already answered, this would apply to the JED, or does the JED have to?
No, the JED's all township property. So, if the JED sees what we do, and, you know, Northfield Center Township wants to do something similar, that's up to them.
But don't we supply security for the JED, or police for the JED?
There's a provision.
Sure.
We did the building part, that's.
Is that true that the JED is totally inside of Northfield Center Township? Because I thought some of the, at least in the discussions before, Chick-fil-A and some of that was inside of?
No, the JED's just those properties that are in the township. We maintain our own properties, which are outside of the JED.
Well, that's in contradiction. When we were talking ODOT, they were saying part of that was our property, anyway.
And I just wanted to say this one more time, that the purpose of this law that we're trying to put into place is to tell the thieves that are out there, that don't come to Macedonia, these unsavory characters that come in, we are trying to stop it. So, I'm, I'm, I, we have to make a statement, we have to make our community feel safer for our residents, and for others that are shopping within our community. And that's what this is all about.
I think that what we're saying is something else, is that we would like these companies who are, have excessive numbers of calls to spend the money instead of us on policing in those areas. And I'm not against that, I'm for that. I just would like to have, and the only reason we're asking, the questions we're asking on the floor is the work session is now not available to us.
All right, thank you. Next is a motion to appoint Nick Mulnar and Kevin Bilkey to the JED Board.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make the motion to confirm the mayor's appointments of Councilman Nick Mulnar and Kevin Bilkey to the JED Board of Directors pursuant to the JED contract.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, keep by saying aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, motions carried. The next item, is any correspondence, could we have any correspondence?
No, sir, I don't have any.
Okay.
Can you back up for a second, sir? The motion's another legislation? Other legislation?
Oh, is there other legislation, I'm sorry?
Yes, I have one tonight. I want to make a motion requiring that all legislation proposed by members of city council be reviewed by the law department prior to being introduced to council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to have a review of all legislation before it is sent to council by the law department. Could we have a roll call?
Could I ask this question, since I think this is aimed at me? Number one, there is nothing prohibiting the law department from reviewing anything in terms of legislation. And number two, the, it says very clearly in our charter that our job is, we can certainly introduce legislation, so I don't see the point of this, Mr. Mulnar.
I, I'm not aiming to see you at all, Sylvia. What I'm trying to do, please, can I speak? I, I want to be a little bit more cautious with our legislation. I think a lot of things come in the eleventh hour, and there's things hidden in there that we need to address and have the legal department verify the legality of things. So, the eleventh hour legislations are going to go away, and what this will do is, is just give us a little security, to say that, you know what, everything on here is legal and, and equitable, so we're good with what we have, and I want them to review those things.
Well, Mr. Mr. Mulnar, let me just put it this way. I have no problem at all with the law department reviewing anything. They choose to, if you choose to ask them to do it, or anybody does. What I'm saying is this, the, and I said this to you earlier, so it's not surprising, I favor following the three-reading process, and we will have plenty of time for review of everything, believe me. I, I have, the only comment I have to make is, I thought we always sent everything to the law department first, and the reason being, I read an article, depending on where you have a comma, depending on which words you use, you can open yourself up to liability. And so what we may think, we have the idea, we may write it, but before it's ever introduced, it better be proofread and legally sound, because we can open the city up. In some of the cases they cited, one comma can cause a lawsuit. I don't want to be in that liability stage.
What, what brought this on?
If we follow the three-reading process, that's not going to happen, because we won't pass it.
What brought this on was Resolution one sixty-four, which was presented in our last council meeting of last year and tried to get forced through to a third reading, in which there were many holes in that legislation. Now, it's kind of contradictory if you really think about this, because you wanted to investigate the credit card purchases, which, by the way, some of those were, were for donors for a meeting, so.
Mr. Mulnar, I didn't push it for first, I did not push it for three weeks.
Let's, let's call the mayor to the floor.
Sorry to be interrupting, but may I make a comment?
Sure.
You know, I, I don't have a problem with the, the law department reviewing things. I think that's good, Nick. But what I'm going to ask is that we amend your motion, and that the law department has to get back with their opinion fourteen days, or by the next council meeting, so that, so that we don't have a pocket veto or something. You know, I, I understand that the law department needs to review for substance, but they, they just can't, and I'm not accusing anybody of this at all. But, you know, I don't want it to be sent to a legislation limbo.
Yes, really.
I will amend my motion to, is it two weeks reasonable, Mark?
That's reasonable.
I'll amend my motion to say that anything that comes forth is reviewed within two weeks in response to council.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bilkey.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hannigan.
No.
Mr. Mulnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Okay, the motion's carried. Okay, I don't have any lengthy mayor's report, because I think the department heads are going to speak about a whole lot of things, and we also have an engineer here, so I don't want to jump into talking a lot about any specific thing when they're going to be talking about a whole lot of other things. So, I, I'll start off with John.
Thank you, Mayor. Mild wonder we're still having, I'm loving it right now. It's allowed us to stay on point so far with coal patching with potholes. If you notice any, please call us, let us know, so we can get out there and try to make necessary repairs. Also, the past week, we have sustained two water main breaks, both, one in Highland Homes off of Laurel, and the other one in Broadmoor. If anyone notices water in their yard, shouldn't be at this time, call us, let us come check it out. Don't look at it and say, "I'll wait for it to get bigger." Let us get out there, so we can try to contact Cleveland Water and get it taken care of before it encroaches into our roads. And also, again, I mentioned last meeting was the streetlights. Notice any route, please call the service department, let us, let us come take a look at them, try to make, make the repairs necessary. That's all I have.
Hey, John, while you were talking about potholes, I was, I happened to be driving north on E, and, and I usually don't look at potholes or think of it, but I made a turn to go to the post office, and I think, what's the name of that street? I can't remember.
Belleview.
Summer.
Summer.
Oh, Valley View.
You're on Rowdy, Rowdy didn't know it was Belleview?
And it's like, the, the curb is breaking off, or the edge.
Yes, we're going to put brining, because over there, it's, it's the burn area.
Yeah.
And we've done that before, and I don't know how they're getting washed out over there. It's not like truck, you know, tractor trailers are driving over there.
Right, but I just noticed it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You asked, I told you.
Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. Avenue of Macedonia and Skilled Nursing Facility across the street, we're working on grading. Some of the footers are still continuing, quite a bit of earthwork in that area. We have part-time inspectors over there watching that. Working on transition with GPD, as well with Chagrin Valley Engineering, things are going well. We're looking at getting a bunch of purchase orders within the next week to get them going on some of these projects. They do have one purchase order to allow them to do all the work they are right now, it's just the specific capital ones we're hoping we could get soon. And then Hall Market Macedonia Commons is now going to be open this weekend, so that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Recreation Department Community Survey is still available. Many of you may have seen a, a nice article that was written in the newsletter by Brianna this week. That is available online, on the city's website, the Recreation Center's website, and on our Facebook page. So, if you have not heard, we are trying to gauge the community to see what amenities residents and people in the greater Macedonia area would like to see as far as a future growth plan for recreation and the parks. So, please, 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 try and take that survey. We really are counting on your feedback to get a good, solid foundation to see what direction we want to move, moving forward. For those of you who are sixty-five and older and may be retired, I'd ask that you check with your insurance company. The Recreation Center does honor the Silver and Fit Program as of this year. We got it late last year. We have been offering the Silver Sneakers Program for many years now. January first, many people's insurance plans change, and you may be eligible even if you were not in the past. So, that would entitle you to use the facility free of charge, because your insurance company actually does pay for that. So, we're happy to check your eligibility at the front desk. If you want to stop in at the Rec Center, we can certainly assist you with that. Lastly, we have a long list of upcoming activities, and they're always listed on our Facebook page and on our website, which is MacRec dot com. We try and keep that very current. So, we have everything from art programs, swim lesson registration dates, youth soccer registration dates for the spring, that's currently taking place, spring craft shows, all kinds of things. So, please be sure to check those pages for a list of our upcoming programs. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Rhonda, I know that you've been here for, what, about a week now?
Almost two.
Almost two, okay. So, now you probably have a very lengthy.
I don't. I've been working, making the, the budget my priority. Obviously, that's got to get completed, so that way the appropriation ordinance can get put in place. So, I've been doing that and meeting with the department heads, still have a few left to go. We'll be having our first finance committee meeting in a couple of weeks, or the week after next, and then just trying to get acclimated and get to know everybody. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mayor, recently we've had, us not personally, but in the area and surrounding departments, alternative heat sources, fires. You know, one of the best things you can do is have your furnace professionally inspected and cleaned and certified to heat your house. If you have problems area, areas in your house, get them taken care of that way. Alternative heat sources tend to cause a lot of fires at this time. So, I, I highly recommend if you, if you consider something like that, consider getting your furnace checked. They are starting fires and have, have started many fires in the surrounding areas. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
No report, Mayor.
Donna? Engineering Department.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll steal this microphone, I guess. Just the past couple of weeks, we've been busy with a number of things, getting appointed here. I know Joe Gelati and myself, and spent a fair amount of time, and some other people from our company, meeting with different department heads and going over a number of things, and really, everybody here at the city's been great to work with, trying to make a smooth transition. We've worked with Nick Feeney, the former engineer, and he's also been very helpful and, and open about information. We did, I know one of the high priorities was the, the ledge road, North Bedford Drainage Study. He did give us a paper copy of that. We've reviewed that document. We have a few questions in terms of some of the assumptions that are being made by the calculations that they've provided. Overall, I think the report there is sound, it does, it does a nice job of documenting the current problem. They looked at a number of different alternatives. Some of the alternatives, I think there are, maybe some other alternatives that should be considered. We're always trying to find ways to be a little bit creative and try to find ways to do things relatively inexpensively. Most of the alternatives, they had, had a pretty big dollar sign attached to them, and really, most of the alternatives that they were providing did not provide significant drainage relief, in my opinion. So, that's a, sort of a quick overview of the drainage report, but I think, I think there's some other alternatives that are more beneficial. What we haven't received from them yet is there's a big computer data file. That's all the raw data that they put in to run the modeling and simulate different types of flooding situations. They are supposed to give us that. I understand that there's some transaction or illegal document that they need to provide back and forth before we release that information. Once we have that, we're going to look at a few different other ways to try to optimize or tweak this thing, to see if there's some other areas where we can make a significant difference and try to solve that flooding issue. So, that's, that's where I'm at with that, if you have a question.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
I just, to add to what Donna said, you know, they look at some areas that are upstream from the question area that we have the problem, and it made a whole lot of sense to me as he was explaining throttling down the flow lines above us, or above this area. And there are probably two sources that we are, that he has identified, that we think we can work to get something done up there by either getting retention, or retention basins installed, and then throttling down the, the flow coming down that inundates that intersection. So, that's what we're going to be looking at. We're probably going to be knocking on some residents' doors to try to resolve these things. So, that's what we're gonna be looking at, we're probably gonna be knocking on some residents' doors to try to resolve these things upstream, and then coming down to this particular site. Also, we're probably going to, uh, encourage NEORSD, which is the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, because they have, some of these lines, uh, are the main tributaries, that they will be then involved in, uh, funding some of this work that needs to be done. So, we'll be looking at them for some help as well.
Mayor, may I ask for, uh, can we get some type of summary, or can you guys provide us with some summary of some of the findings there? Because I know this has been a rubber council, and we'd all love to know at least some idea of what some of those suggestions may be, and more importantly, people that live over there have been dying for something to just, something to look at to have some type of resolution, so if, if something could be provided to council, at least a summary of what you have, we would very appreciate that.
I, I think that where the problem lies is, is that the information, as he indicated, the data information that they imported into the report, he doesn't have yet. So, he has to go back and go through that, and, in a sense, probably wash through it to make sure that he has everything, and that they had everything, and then he's gonna be able to give us a full report on it. It's, it's certainly our desire to get it done as quickly as possible, but because he doesn't have that information yet, and because there needs to be a release given to GPD, because they won't release this stuff to us until they get a release, so they're working on a release. Because if one engineering firm doing, has information and is providing it to another one, they wanna have a certain document prepared by their legal department to, to release it to, to the city.
I, I, yes, I, I agree with Nick, I would like to see, uh, some of that information, it sounded, um, I'm sorry, I didn't know your last name, but, uh, I've heard him call you Donna, but...
Donna Sheedy.
Donna Sheedy.
What, what I'm interested in, I, it sounds like there are some things that involve, uh, upstream issues, or what's that, outside of the area of the study, is that what you're saying?
No, that, that's not really it, I, I think if you look at the entire drainage area, and it's about roughly fourteen hundred acres of, of real estate that drain
Yes, right.
to that ledge road and, and to the flooding area. If you take all fourteen hundred acres, uh, there might be certain spots that it might be, uh, they were proposing some, doing some detention right very close to where the big flood is.
Yes, that's what they were saying.
It's been our experience that that's usually as a, as an approach i- is not the best, because what's happened is there's too much water coming to that spot, and you build a basin, and it fills up in a, in a matter of a couple minutes.
I get you, alright, yeah.
So, uh, our, our approach is to maybe look a little bit beyond the actual flooding problem, and look for other areas where you can retain water, so that it doesn't all come rushing to the same location at the same time.
That was the current concern I expressed in the summertime, is that it seemed like we were focusing on where we're, where it's all coming down right at that spot, rather than in a bigger area.
Well, in, you know, in defense of, of just the, the process, sometimes there might be an easy fix, and you won't know that until you analyze that.
Till you work through it.
Maybe there's a, a couple of pipes that need to be replaced, and all of a sudden, you can provide some relief, but I think their analysis has shown, there's no one single fix that, that's easy, and it's gonna be probably incremental, and incrementally, I think there are some really nice fixes that will be low cost that could benefit that whole stream corridor.
Well, we certainly hope so. Uh, on the, uh, Our Lady of Guadalupe issue, we, we've talked about that earlier. Uh, have you received the re, the engineering report from that?
I don't believe that we have, Joe, are you, did we, did we get that? Yeah, we, we haven't gone through that one, we just recently received that.
Oh, alright, so I would like to have your feedback on that also, thank you.
Yes.
There's, there's gonna have to be some value in engineering on that one, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Mark, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, the city did recently receive a, from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a liquor permit application for fun and stuff. As legislative authority, you have the ability to request a hearing, either at the county seat or down in Columbus, to discuss the, um, advisability of issuing a permit application. Currently, the response is due on February eighth. The city does have the availability of requesting about a thirty-day extension of time, which can be done via letter through the, by the clerk of council, to the Division of Liquor Control, so it's really up to council what they wanna do at this point.
I think we have a, a executive session later tonight, dealing with some legis, some...
Litigation?
Right. Is this something that we can be discussed in executive session?
It could be discussed, because there's, there's potential of a hearing and administrative type litigation at the end of it. Not, you know, anticipated at this point, obviously, but...
No, but I'm, I'm just thinking that, that it might be an appropriate time, because I think you've caught all of us totally unaware, and, you know, we don't even know what to do yet.
Sure, and I just raise it because you can request an extension of time, um, to give yourself time to, to consider it, so I recommend at least doing that at this point. And that's something that you don't need to take formal action, but Josephine could send a...
Do we have to take an action to do that, or can we just...
Yeah.
But we can talk about it in executive session, too.
Sure.
I think that might be appropriate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, um...
Mayor, could I ask a que, could I use this opportunity to announce a civil service test? I normally don't do it, but I'd like the advertising aspect of it. On behalf of the Civil Service Commission, there's going to be a police entry-level exam on March sixteenth. If anyone in the public is interested in applying, applications are available from February the eighth until February twenty-sixth. There is a thirty-dollar fee that is required at the time the application is picked up. And we encourage anyone who's interested in applying for police officer who has attended OPADA, or is currently into academy, to apply to the City of Macedonia. All the information about the test and the information regarding, um, uh, salary and benefits information is located on the city's website.
Um, I, unfortunately, I jumped over the committee reports, are there any committee reports?
I have two, unless someone else has any.
Uh, I just, we met as, for the first time for parks and rest, and everything seemed to go well, we did have a few absentees, we're hopefully moving forward, we won't see, and everyone will, uh, attend.
I'll make this quick, um, the cemetery board meeting, yes, I love that board, as much as many people say. We did, um, adopt a budget that will then be presented to, um, in the general assembly with all the communities. One of the things we're looking to do is there will be a raising in fees, um, for purchase of lots and for the activities that you incur, um, with burials. The other thing is an additional, um, endowment fee when you purchase a plot. That is an attempt for the board to start taking away the expense that all the communities may have, to have, um, care and perpetu- perpetuity for those people who are buried in the cemetery. We've got some other issues that we're looking at, um, you heard mention, I believe, last year about the fence, we're holding off on that, we wanna take a look at what can and cannot be done at that cemetery for a fence, so you'll see more about that, um, Brianna, we're gonna be working with you to maybe getting something educational out to the community, so that you can see what's going on. Second of all, finance committee, um, I did meet with the mayor and with Rhonda, and we took a look at a high-level blush meeting. What we'd like to do is call finance meeting on February ninth at six o'clock, um, that will be the first session, um, and that will give us the state of the city budget, capsulizing what happened in two thousand and fifteen, where we're at and projected income for two thousand and sixteen, and then to start talking about the proposed employee budget. Um, that way, then we can have the first reading on the budget on the eleventh, and then have another meeting that will totally picture of the capital improvements, because we know that's usually where we have a lot of discussion. And so the department heads, working with Rhonda and with the mayor, are putting together their capital requirements, what they'd like to see in their wish list, from A to Z, 'cause we know we can't meet everything, and I have to look at John at that, 'cause it's been a while, the other John, not, not that John, this John, Mr. Natovich, it's been a while since, you know, we, we had a full-blown capital improvement plan of where we needed to be and where we needed to go, so we wanna resurrect that and have a plan that looks not only for this year, but for the next five years, so that we can logically tackle those issues that are needed. Um, so the first one will be the ninth, the first reading will be the eleventh. Our next meeting, that would either be, um, February twenty-ninth or March seventh, I'm leaving that out to council. We must pass a budget before the end of March, and so, we all know there is, uh, Holy Thursday is the date that we have our last council meeting in March, it potentially could be canceled, so we're looking at maybe doing the third reading in adoption at the first meeting in March, so tight timeframe, but Rhonda's already, as she said, started the discussions with the department heads, she's already got a very high-level overview, gonna bring it down into more details for us at our first meeting. Thank you.
Uh, just a question, when we were talking about the Northfield Macedonia Cemetery, uh, this is just a curious question for me, is, how many, uh, plots were about the, is it, are there?
About six hundred.
About six hundred?
We do, that's the first question I was asked when I walked in, um, because at some point we'll run out of land. And so when I was on the board before, we talked about, do we buy more land, do we expand, there's a house to the west of it, um, it was up for sale, we chose not to purchase it, there's discussion about going across the street, then you have the issue of how to get across the street, so right now, we're not to the point of being at capacity, but we're still gonna have those discussions.
Okay, um, is there any unfinished business? Any new business?
I do wanna make a few comments on the coyotes in the area, there's a couple of reports in the newspaper this week, and, uh, on Fox Eight. Um, I have talked to John Golden and Jeff Westerfield from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, just to get information out to people, um, he sent me an email, this is Westerfield, um, it was pretty detailed, I haven't looked through the whole thing, but, uh, it, you know, for me, it seemed like it went from a neighborhood thing to a community thing, and now it's, um, you know, Summit County has issued a warning, um, and Nick Constranderis, who is our Summit County Councilor, has called me and said they were looking to get involved themselves. Um, so at this point, rather than, you know, talking, I'm not an expert on it, I don't wanna pontificate up here like I am, but, uh, I've done a little bit of research, so if anybody has any questions, I probably could answer them, if they have any questions I can't answer, at least I kinda can direct them where to go to get those answers. Um, and maybe in the next few days, we can get some of the information out that was sent to me, um, just about the Northeast Ohio Coyotes in general, um, and, and we can go from there. Other than that, you know, it's, it's, it's just about safety, you know, safety for us, safety for our pets, and safety for the coyotes themselves, so we don't want people go around like the Wild West, it should be, get, get educated about what we can do to stop any more attacks on, on these pets, and, um, and if you have any other questions, like I said, you could direct them to me, um, if I can answer them, I know where to send them, so thanks.
If I could just make one comment, I had one living in my backyard, under the shed, and at that time I had a cat. The coyote and the cat were best friends, go figure, the coyote never went after the dog that lived next door, and they come out of the valley, they come out of the, uh, Kihauga Valley Park.
Just, you know, it, it's rare that they go after animals, I mean, usually they, they, you know, they stay away, they're skittish animals to begin with, and this is me pontificating, which I said I wasn't, but, uh, it, it's very rare that they go after humans and after small pets, but unfortunately, we had, um, an incident at Thousand Oaks, so this is more of a safety message, so it doesn't happen again.
If you, if you see this thing, as I said to my husband, this big mangy dog with a large tail, it's a coyote, it's not a dog, I don't know.
One other quick item, uh, something council started today, it's relatively new, and Mrs. Hannigan alluded to it earlier. Uh, the work session that we normally have, we generally start it at six-thirty, we'd have a lot of conversation in that room, and, uh, it was my feeling, and I feel after talking to members of council, that there was a lot of third-party recordings that, you know, would disseminate what happened in that room. Uh, we're gonna try not doing that anymore, we're gonna have those conversations on the floor, because I think it's important for the questions that not only the people up here ask, it may be one of the questions that you guys may wanna hear, so, the things that took place in that room in the past are gonna be in the past, we're gonna do everything out on the floor, so seven fifteen's gonna be our general start time, uh, only thing we're going in there to do is assign out who has which ordinance or resolution, and we're gonna walk out onto the floor and have all our discussions on the floor. It's always been a rub with me why we have those discussions back there anyway, if we need to do that, and there's something where the mayor or a certain member of this council would like to speak more about something back there, we will accommodate that, but just so everyone knows, 'cause we wanna make sure that the times are right, seven fifteen will be our work session, at seven thirty, we come to the floor. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Yes, Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn into executive sessions for the purpose of discussing pending litigations.
Excluding...
Excluding the Farmhurst Pla case and Engel versus...
City versus Engel.
What he said.
Which, which has been dismissed.
It's still pending.
Would you repeat that again, please? Pla or pla?
No, it's not Engel versus, it's City versus Engel.
Sorry about that, sir, I didn't hear it.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
I didn't know the legal, uh, wording of that.
Alright, I'm gonna do roll call now, which is a requirement. Mr. Belkey? It's going into executive, you have to do a roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Belkey, and Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannigan?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to adjourn into an executive session, uh, once we get out of that room, we'll come back to the floor and adjourn the meeting, we will have no other discussions outside of that. Thank you so much for being here, have a good evening, drive safely.
Have fun?
Um, I have a question.
Yes.
About the... It's stated...
For the...
It's an income tax.
Um, oh, yeah, yes.
So, I'm income tax based, that's why, I think that's why he...
Yeah, yeah.